Small and major North City Council, National Media Committee, Canada. Wednesday, June twelve, two thousand and forty-four, six P M, Council Chamber. Call to order, Patrick.
Here.
Russell.
Here.
Delly.
Here.
Here. Cavan.
Here.
Need a motion to please agenda. Roger Patrick, how about Patrick?
Yes.
Russell.
Yes.
Delly.
Yep.
Morgan.
Yes.
Okay, three, Rescue Department, are you talking then Sean?
Um, so yeah, so we had a conversation the other day, um, and this is kind of the follow up to it. You know, we sent, I obviously sent a message out to the crew, said be here, what's your opinion? Um, let us know, uh, what you guys think, especially since some of them have to leave before I do a whole heck of a lot of talking about that. Um, I mean, I would invite them to come up if they would like to say anything personally about it, give their opinion on it, just so that we don't, we're not keeping anybody here that, um, might need to, um, does anybody do anything, guys? No? Okay.
What?
So, just wanted to go.
Nobody heard what you said, sorry.
If any of the crew that's got to leave would like to say something before they have to do that. Okay.
Is this strictly about the Audubon stuff?
Yes.
Yeah, we're on that, we're on that. It's, it's, so.
Sorry, I just want to make sure because there's what, one, two, three, four different topics in that one, so, just trying to clarify.
I mean, any of them could say they need to leave, but, um, they should, um, but, no, so, um, so it's really about it as far as that, I mean, that was kind of the main concern, right? It was to, was to get their input, their knowledge to, um, I don't know even what you want to say, that, uh, that they knew about that. I guess. Um, got an email today with the updated contract, is that right?
That is correct.
Um, thank you for saying something. Yeah, I just want to say while we're talking about that, um, you know, we had, the RFP for the county came through, right? Uh, through multiple meetings, we had an EMS council, um, local one, right? And, I don't know, a few weeks ago, four or six weeks ago, something like that, however long it was, we, the decision was made by me to no longer be a part of that committee. So, I mean, when we talk about why you guys have not gotten emails, that's part of that, I mean, I hadn't done a lot of work on it. But, it's because stepping in, having conversation with people that I don't know about, to get information that I'd also don't know about, you know, doesn't sit well with me. So, um, to have them reach out to me and say, hey, will you talk to them about this and, you know, this kind of stuff, to have an email directed as a CC to learn that, you know, you would call, which is, like, problem is not calling, it's, why wasn't I aware of this? You know, what's, made a big deal out of making sure you were aware of all of this and then I did not get told any of that stuff. So why, I mean, so that's part of the reason that when I emailed Steve and Chip, I just emailed them and said, hey, look over this, once we get it done, then whatever. I never actually heard back from Steve after he emailed me and just said, hey, give me a call Tuesday. I did call him on voicemail, but, um, you know, and that, the Guthrie County thing particularly will come up later, but, um, you know, that's, that's kind of the reason for this. It's just, I mean, I'm the one with the information, what's, why did you call the hospital to talk to them?
Uh, because I wanted information.
Why?
I want, I had a question, saying as a elected official, I am not able to call the hospital?
No.
Is that what you're trying to get at?
That is not.
So I, I have a right to call them and find out, I had a question, and they answered my question.
And I said, yeah, said that, that's not the problem, the problem is that, do I have the answer to that question?
I went with who, I went to call.
Well, I'm just.
That's all.
Okay, that's.
That's all.
Yeah.
Now, we're, we're on the Audubon, we're talking about the guessing, so, let's go back to Audubon agreement.
No, that was the Audubon contract.
That was Audubon, okay, I'm just trying to.
So if you want to know, I don't know if you want to cover it, or I'll cover it. Um, you can cover it if you want to, there was, there was a change in the contract. Because I called up and I had a question specifically about number one, where it talked, the, uh, city should make services available twenty-four hours per day, seven days per week. Uh, I also called, uh, our attorney, he said he had looked at this, but he also thought that that was a little odd to have that in that contract. Which I figured if it had been added, that should have been called before, it's not a big deal. So I called the hospital, say, hey, you know, and the lady, uh, the CEO, went right into that, that specific topic. She says, we made a change. And it added the language of, cities are not required to transport non-critical patients between the hours of nine A M. and six, or nine P M. to six P M., if they're ambulance transferred, blah, 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 you can read it there. It talks about, uh, can, uh, emergency condition, critical access hospital, not everybody, Stokes, standing, blah, 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 blah. So, any non-critical could be held for F R.'s, they said. But any critical, we would still be calling, keep those out, that's what, that's what, so. So the, the, the contract that we had, and I don't know if we just got, if we had this already, if we have this updated or?
Al had, uh, no, Al had talked to me hours before the meeting on Monday, and he had said, hey, the CEO wants to add the language for non-critical. And I said, okay, I won't be able to get that done before the meeting, but, um, I know that I mentioned it in the meeting on Monday, that he had called and said that that needed to be added. Uh, and he hadn't, he had sent me an email and it was, the only thing he had changed in the email, he said, you know, insert these words, non-critical into there. I said, well, that's, you know, not that really, in general, you know, I mean, that's.
And, and that's why I said, I said, I don't know if maybe you just gave us a wrong copy, I didn't, but you did have, so.
Yeah, no, I.
But that's, that's my, my question on, if it's twenty-four seven, why are we, why would they not want to do it nine P M.? But, upon further investigation, that's in the same, that's in Penore's contract also, that same provision, uh, so it's not too far off. Uh, but the only thing that is in the Penore contract that's not in ours, that I see right now in the same spot, is that Penore had that they would not be required to transport patients over one hundred miles one way between the hours of nine P M. and six P M. So that is a possibility, we got it in there.
But, I had them, I specifically had them remove that, so that, because over a hundred miles includes any transports to Omaha or Des Moines. So, realistically, the chance that we get to call to transport somebody from one of those two cities is the highest possibility. I mean, there's, there would be very, very, very few calls outside of those two, and so that doesn't actually prevent them from calling us at all, for that matter. So, um, so that's why I had them take that out, because I said, you know, a hundred miles is still a long ways, when, you know, at two in the morning, or, you know, whatever.
Sean, I got a question.
Yes, sir.
The other night Cory had mentioned, the shift's over at four o'clock, you get a call at quarter to four. How many people are on the rescue and drivers in the audience tonight? Okay, I got a question for you, if you get a call at four, and your shift's off at four, are you willing to go to Audubon and then on Omaha to transport?
Nope. Doing it in Penore, I'm no.
I guess, I, I mean, this is totally up the council, I called Lisa, I said, why did you guys terminate the contract? It was wear and tear on our service, they just get more, I had three or four calls doing this. They thought at first it's supposed to be one or two, then three, middle of the winter, without a call, icy conditions. Like I say, I don't have a vote on this, I do have an opinion, but if we can hire more staff, but the staff we have now, I said, well, I don't want to transfer that far. And I only hear from the rest of the council.
That was my question that you could just ask too.
How would we, how would we do that then? What do you mean by that? I mean, how, how do you, if, we have a crew in a, in that situation, and they just don't want to make that transfer? It really depends on the specifics of the situation, uh, there's a lot of variables there that you could never really fully account for. But, you know, you've got two crews on, right? So let's say, two of them would be willing to do it, right? Maybe they're not on the first crew or the second crew, whatever, um, then they can make some arrangement there. If it's, you know, let's say it is at eight forty-five P M., right? We, I would get the call first, they would call that, that's, you know, what we're going to set up, the hospital calls me, I said, hey, uh, we got somebody that needs to go to Omaha. It's eight forty-five, um, okay, let me call, talk to the crew, see who's on, see if they're willing to do it, yay, nay, whatever. Call the hospital back and say, hey, my crews, they got somewhere to be, or they got to be at work at six in the morning or whatever, they really, you know, don't want to do that. Can we schedule somebody to pick them up at six A M.? You know, because the reality is, is that if they get dropped off at the hospital at one in the morning, what's happening? Nothing, they're going to be put in the bed, checked in, and then, you know, the doctor will come in at, well, I know I need my hospital, six, seven A M. or whatever, uh, whatnot, but, so how often you would need, you would need to transport somebody at eight forty-five P M. would probably be pretty limited, um, in scope now, of course, it could happen. But again, you know, if we call them and say, hey, we really just don't have the capability to do that right now, um, then, then that's the way that it is, you know what I mean? So, a, and when I talk to the people from the hospital, you know, they, they said, you know, just call us, any concerns, any problems, you know, let's, let's work together to find it, you know, to, to come to a solution. And so I think that they would be open, you know, they should understand that too, they're, they're hospital, they know nothing's going on at one in the morning. So, um, that, that's how that process would go. Again, there's a million variables there that you could never say, well, this is exactly how we would handle that, but, um, you know, just occupational hazard at some point as well, so.
So my question, kind of an open question about Sean and the, the council here, you know, I've heard plenty of times, you know, what happens if this is right at the end of somebody's shift? Well, wouldn't we, maybe not knowing how the shifts are set up to at the EMS, wouldn't we just say, hey, we're getting close to this, we're going to dispatch this out with our next incoming shift? Is that something we can do instead of putting that stress and strain on the outgoing shift? I mean.
Yeah, and that, that, that would be, like when I said, six A M., that's when our new crews come on.
Okay.
You know what I mean? Uh, so that, that's kind of how you would handle that particular piece, yeah.
Okay.
And, so, but, at some point, you have to specify a time in there, you can't just say, oh, you know, don't call us in the evening. Right, right, because then, then there's no, there's no deadline, that will depend on whoever's on, so on and so forth. Uh, so yeah, that's, and that's what I meant by, say, hey, do we really need to take this eight forty-five, or can I wait until the next group comes on? So.
Sean, I'm, I don't want to kick you in the shits here by no means.
I didn't even have a chance to.
What, what's your motive behind this? Is it just the dollars?
No.
If it's the dollars for equipment, I think we could probably work out something, maybe, and, and I'm not trying to, um, um, you know, swear my vote either way, I'm just trying to see, what's the big push for this, I guess? So if, if it's just a revenue, or what is, what is, what's the motive behind it?
The motive behind it is that to generate revenue, but specifically to generate revenue so that we can really solidify the response here in the city. If I am working and have the financial leeway to build up so that I can have a crew, two crews on simultaneously during the day, that gives me a much better reason and more depth to handle any of the emergencies that can come up in town, you know? Then we're not worried about, oh, you know, all five people are out because it's the summer and you got whatever going on, or, right? Um, no, now we have thirteen or fourteen people that we can get a hold of that could come in and back this up, so for this emergency or that emergency, or, you know, when people are on vacation and this and that. And right now, we really just don't have any depth to do that, because ultimately, um, there's not a lot of, of hmm, need, you know, I don't want to necessarily say that, but that's definitely the wrong word. But we don't want a whole lot of second outs, so right now, if we were to say, okay, yeah, let's staff two ambulances at the same time, um, then sit around and, and, you know, that second out ambulance goes on three calls a month. You know, and that obviously would be exceptionally expensive and very difficult to do, but when you can, when you can have even just sixty-five calls, you know, then they've got a reason. And plus sixty-five calls that take, you know, roughly twice as long as the calls we do, then they essentially have a reason. And so then, now, we can really take this without slapping all of that on the city of Stewart, you know, and see how it works. If, if we can't do it, or, you know, whatever, then, then that's fine, that's also, you know, we can preempt building anything at the time to, um, say, hey, if, you know, whatever, Guthrie County, however they decide they want to do their stuff, then now we're already working towards a second crew or, you know, bigger roster, whatever, then, you know, when they step in and say, hey, can you do X, Y, Z for us? We can say, yeah, that's fine, because now we're already headed down that path without asking the city of Stewart for two hundred and fifty thousand additional dollars. You know what I mean? Or, you know, what, I just, that's just a number, but, so that's the motivation, is to really be able to do this stuff, to start this, that process without immediately putting to her, because not only would that impact the city a lot, like financially, like, nobody would agree to it. I, Ash, when we were doing our budget, he was like, I'm going to take this sixty thousand dollars on, we'll find it somewhere else. Very well, I need that to even do what I'm doing, and so, you know, those kinds of things are, are, are what I'm up against, and, and this was, you know, to me, a shot to say, well, this is how you, you know, how we really supplement the service here to provide a better service to the two thousand people we have in town. Um, you know, without really adding a whole lot of workload secondary to that. So, I mean, it's, it's worth those transfers along, and no doubt about that, but, you know, nobody just gives over money for free, unfortunately.
And at any given time, either party can, with a, what I need, says in there, you can terminate.
And so that's why it's, it's yearly, and when we talked to Paul when we were negotiating the price, I said, you know, we'll do it, let's plan on sitting down, um, December, January, or whatever, so that that's before we start doing our, either, you know, the hospital budget or the city budget. And now we can, we can get together and say, what's going well, what's not going well, are we going to be doing this next July first? Like what's, what does that look like so that we can really get a, a good idea, or, or a better idea, right? Once you've been in it for six months to, to know whether that's working, or what issues we may or may not need to address. So, and then they were open, they said, that's perfect, so.
So, you're saying if this goes through, um, there's going to be more personnel that need to be hired?
Correct.
How hard is it to hire medics? Because this is a field that I do not know, so, I mean, is, I mean, is, is the workforce flooded with medics, EMT V's, or, or are they kind of scarce to come by?
It's kind of scarce to come by, um, in, as a, yeah, um, there's a lot more open positions than there are, um, applicants a lot of times. You know, I guess fortunately, if you will, um, you know, a lot of us have more than one job, I mean, that's just the nature of the beast, uh, unfortunately. But, I think hiring a couple of people on, you know, part-time to work hours like that, you know, you get two or three people that work, say, you know, total of three to five days between all three of them, or four of them, or whatever, you know, you're, now you're filled out. You know what I mean? So, so we really don't need a whole lot of them to, to do, to cover the workload this is, that, that this demands. So, um, so I, it won't be easy, it'll take some time, right? We discussed that, like, the length of July and stuff could be, um, you know, touch and go as far as having a second crew and so on and so forth, but, you know, over a couple of months, I don't, it's not unreasonable to hire, I mean, Brunel just added a whole bunch of ambulances, and they hired four full-time at the same time, so they're out there, they, you know, people, um, you know, are looking for work all the time in the industry, just, you know, busting, finding the right fit as well, so. So it's not impossible, but, kind of like when you guys were, when, you know, the World Department or Street Department was trying to find that guy, you know, you got to find the right guy and this kind of stuff, and so, and with them.
So this proposal would get us extra people, right? We'd be able to hire people, but those people would be allocated really just to doing the transports, and then some second outs here. Is that correct?
Uh, not necessarily, I mean, you kind of, uh, one of the other benefits is, is that if you have two crews on, let's say, we've got two calls during the day in the city here, right? Well, if you all get a call in Audubon, then you can split it, you know, the.
Right, well, that's what I, that's what I mean, is that my goal would be to get more people to do just calls for Stewart. But we have to do this proposal just to get more people to do calls for Stewart, and they're going to be obligated to Audubon. What would it take just to get some more people to be able to staff two trucks for Stewart? In, uh, the last Monday, you talked about seventy thousand dollars left over to hire people out of this money. So, if we do the proposal and only take seventy thousand to hire people with the proposal, now it's going to be a quarter of a million dollars without the proposal.
So it's not exactly seventy thousand, that's how much, well, the numbers we were working on at that point was a hundred thousand. So we can say that there's a hundred thousand, but the, the additional cost is in that hiring those people to provide a second out ambulance when we don't need it, except for two or three calls, there's no additional revenue coming in for that. So here we can guarantee that they're going, guarantee sixty-five calls, they're, we know they're going to generate X amount of dollars in revenue, and so that offsets that, of course, there's extra, you know, costs associated with, you know, the fuel and whatever else, right, the maintenance, that kind of, um, those kind of things. But, if, if we have a crew sitting here, you know, that doesn't, that doesn't generate more calls, and so this does generate more calls, so that, you know, rather than just kind of, do you, you understand what I'm saying, like?
It's possibly generate more calls, it, you don't always, not always going to get a transport, you could go days without one.
Absolutely.
And then we have to, I mean, yeah, you're getting the money from the county, you know, but you're not getting that additional, uh, transport revenue. Uh, you're just getting the hundred, pardon, the hundred and thirty thousand at that point, um, on that. The, the, the big concern for me is that we do have this Guthrie County thing coming up. That was going on two years, something like that, we finally got, uh, an RFP. Um, we don't know where that's going to happen, uh, or what's going to happen, it just seems we're, and if we were to get two hundred thousand dollars on this, it'd be a no-brainer, you know? But that's not guaranteed, you can't guarantee that to make that other amount up and just transport it. You know, you don't know for sure.
Right.
You know, I mean, really, the only thing you can be guaranteed is a hundred and thirty thousand dollars a year, period. I mean, I know you'd get some, I'm not discounting that, I know you'd get some, but you don't know where it'd be, you know, maybe everybody starts eating healthier, who knows? But it's, it's, I thought our focus was going to be on the Guthrie County proposal, to get that ironed out and to see where we were on that. And, and then forward with that and hopefully do something, um, I, I don't know, that's, that's my concern, I, I just.
Let's see where you're, where you're coming from on that, Mike, but, then I start to think that, yeah, like you said, that hopefully people need help and there's no transfer. But if there's no transfer, you're still making money, the ambulance is still staying here in Stewart, you're not turning away or where you don't have the wear and tear and the fuel and everything else too, and it's still generating money from that hundred and thirty thousand. But that's kind of where I'm seeing it, I mean, it's, uh, kind of on the fence on it, I kind of, I can see both sides of it pretty, pretty quickly.
Gentlemen, may I say something? Can you come up, my phone? Brian, after he done, I want you to speak just a little bit, on the last ten years, you did the survey on our losses on the rescue unit, on normally a hundred and some thousand dollars.
Yeah, do you guys, you still have that, actually?
Yeah.
Yeah. As somebody that works for another service that does transfers out of hospitals, majority of the time, when the calls happen and they drop, you take it. It doesn't matter what the weather is, it doesn't matter what conditions, doesn't matter how tired. It doesn't matter what the weather is. It doesn't matter what conditions. It doesn't matter how tired you are. You take it. So, in a way, you try to wait for a crew change. You try to wait. But eventually, they get tired of waiting and they start calling. And they say they wanna be flexible. They're not flexible. It means that you will be going at four-thirty, five o'clock, six o'clock, whenever it drops, you go. And that wherever you're supposed to go. So, you're going past your shift or whatever. That's like the real line is that's what actually happens. And everything, they don't care if whether you're gonna be there. They don't care if your ambulance is busted or it doesn't have fuel or what type of staff you have on board. They want you there, and that's how it works.
Thank you. Brian, do you wanna, do you wanna say something?
Well, just to get involved sixteen questions. So, first of all, you should be thanking the council members and the mayor to doing research and calling outbound to try to find out the best information to make the best decision, not insulting them. That's the first thing. Secondly, how many issues in that contract? Is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah, there was some.
Has everybody brought to light?
Well, I just, yeah, I just, when I called up to the, she added some language. And I wanted to clarify part of this. And then she sent me the thing and, uh, they, I didn't even know what language they were gonna add, you know? Um, she said we had some language and it was, you know, that we are not, we are not immune from going out from nine PM to six AM. Uh, if it's critical, you gotta go. You know, I doubt, she did say, is there gonna be, is there gonna be a slew of them? I, I doubt it, you know, but it is possible. So...
Ash, I don't know if these numbers are, are still in the range or not, but these are gross budgets, three hundred and fifty thousand for the rescue collectively. And the revenue brought in with six... With billable, with billables only is one sixty? Okay, so you're losing a hundred and ninety-ish. These round numbers, two hundred thousand, what?
Hundred to hundred fifty.
But this, I'm talking about without the city's tax revenue. I'm talking about just the billables. If you started three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, how much is a billables bring in?
One sixty.
Okay, so you got, it would be closer to two hundred. Two hundred thousand dollars ballpark that the city's taxes are, and the taxpayers of Stewart are supplemental guys. So, again, if you just look at the total cost per call, take that two hundred thousand dollars, if I go the number of six hundred calls?
Uh, yeah.
So, that's what the citizens of Stewart are paying to have an independent individual localized rescue unit. Why doesn't Harlan Atlantic experience all this? I don't know. I'm not asking for a response, but that'd be my question. So, I go back to what Corey's at, what, what Corey's question was. Is there a net increase that you need that, that is really driving this? That there's, you know, your goodwill is burnt out, and I understand that. You're putting in hours or needing additional funding that is above. So, you're trying to do all this work to get a net margin of twenty or thirty thousand dollars when in fact, it may just be a budget adjustment versus driving all these rescue units all over the central Iowa and ramshotting all these employees that Penora just told you they don't wanna do this anymore. And the city administrator that Dick Cook talked to is a sharp gal. And if she says it's not working, she try everything to make something work. So, um, you know, if, if you're at that, if you're at that level, you know, to me, if you're at a two hundred thousand dollar shortfall, that's where you'd have to get it from the Guthrie County tax before you wanna increase your overhead, right? Because the citizens of Stewart are paying that shortfall. Right now, when a call goes out, people in this town pay property taxes to, and sales tax to Guthrie County, Addyair County. So, they're not sharing that cost of that EMS call, right? The citizens of Stewart paid for that when it leaves town. So, I mean, to me, it goes back to what you said. Deal with one of these things at a time, you know? But, and again, I think the rescue gets bad rap, that it, that it loses two hundred thousand dollars. Compare it to other departments. What does, uh, each department bring in and what are their expenses? Okay? I think the streets department and the fire department are the only ones that are more solvent and bring in a better proportion of their revenue than the rescue unit. The rescue unit can use forty percent. Is there another department that brings in forty percent? Cause I don't think so. Just me, other than streets and fire, but anyway.
Thank you, Brian.
Yeah. Hey, Dick, do you think that maybe you could talk to a Penora EMS person who does transports currently?
Yeah. Because I talked to Lisa today and she said that, just wear and tear on everybody.
Well, I guess first thing, I've never seen Stewart's version of the contract. Okay, I don't know what's in it. I don't know unless someone tells me if the Lamar contract and the Stewart contract are similar or exactly the same. I don't know that. All I know is what I see in Lamar. So, what I've seen in the time that I've worked up there is it starts out with one or two calls. Just like they said, they obided by that at first. Then it progresses into two calls a week. Then it'll progress to four calls a day. And then it'll come, it'll, it just keeps progressing. So, it's not about the wear and tear, because I don't have any control of that. My thing is, if they can do it to Penora, why wouldn't they do it to us? So, that's where I'm at. I live it. I know what's going on up there. There's a reason they got rid of it, and that's the reason. It just kept increasing. And they do badger harass. Been on receiving of that. I've been on the form with them. And they, they push. We had an incident this winter, or we had a snowstorm. Um, they wanted us to go out in that snowstorm. And they were closing roads. They went ahead and went, they were on the road almost six hours with that call. They got back from that call, they called them out again to the same place, both places. So...
That's what Lisa told me today.
So, I mean, there's something to what I'm saying.
Yes.
I mean, I, I'm not here to stop progress. That's not what I'm wanting. Mainly, I want to get along with everybody. I want to grow the, the rescue too. Grew up in this town, so I have a lot of pride in fire and rescue up there. My folks are both on the department. So, I mean, I want that solidarity. I want that, that growth. So, I guess that's where I'm at. So, any other questions?
So, to follow up with that, I mean, it sounds like the numbers we've been given of around an average of sixty-five calls a year isn't truly what it's gonna be.
He gave me the numbers through the end of April and they, I would have to look at it. But I wanna say they had, it averaged out to one point four.
I've never seen that.
Calls per week. So, I mean, you're gonna have high and low times and, and unfortunately, when you're talking about a snowstorm, um, they can't fly. So, if you get somebody that needs to go somewhere, um, drive them there. That's the way that it works, and that's not exclusive to Audubon County. Um, I can tell you, I've been literally all over this state transporting people in snowstorms. Um, and that, that sucks, you know? But they can't fly, they can't fly. And fortunately, uh, Audubon is in, um, they're geographically like very far from anybody, right? That's, that's why these kind of, these takes so long. So, if you need somebody who needs care, a higher level of care than they can provide, and something that they need even in the next six hours, you send that person by aircraft because it's, you know, they can get outside of City from Audubon in less than two hours. That's a six-hour drive, um, you know, or I don't know what it actually, but somewhere along those lines, right? And that, so that's why they utilize the helicopter a lot is because those people that need care immediately, need it immediately. But they're not, they're not unlimited, you know? There's a lot more danger in flying. And I would rather, you know, personally, um, me speaking for myself, uh, I would rather drive around in a snowstorm all day if it saves the lives of three people that die in helicopter. So, I mean, that sucks. It happens anyways. But, uh, you know, and, and there's things that we can do about that. That doesn't mean we should be or need to be or just gonna say, let's do this because I don't want some of them to die, right? There's, there's lots of options, but sometimes not.
So, is our service lacking right now for Stewart or is it stable?
It's right on that line. You know, I think it would only, it would take very little, um, to send it into, you know, I guess a tailspin for that matter as far as, as covering ships and doing things like that. Um, I, I mean, it is stable, uh, but it's, it's stable like diesel. You can get it lit on fire, you know, but you're, you're not worrying about it exploding in your face, you, you know? But, but if you're messing with it, it's, it's not as stable as, I mean, there's still the potential there.
So, if we kept things the same, uh, what resources do you need to shore that up? I, I think somebody kind of asked, what is it that could be accomplished without doing this? Because I, I sometimes think it seems like our focus gets off of Stewart. Yes, we want big things. We wanna grow. We wanna do this. Is this the right way? Is there, is there a different way we could make it more stable without doing this? What is it that you need to make that as, uh, stable, more stable? To keep, is it, is it people with benefits? Is it, is it pay? What is it, you know? What is it exactly? I know this would probably bring in some money, but man, we're, you know, I know people said, and you said it's not really wear and tear, but you're gonna have that, you know? And you only get paid for, from the hospital to where you're going, right? For not getting a bill of patients. So, now you got from here to Audubon, from wherever you're coming back, that's, that's just wear and tear. You know, it's unavoidable because that's the nature. But what is it that we could do to, to bolster what you need without doing this right now? Because like I said, I am really concerned about the Guthrie County thing. You, most of us were not for it when it first came out. My mind was changed. I'm very open to that, you know? Because, uh, I can see, uh, some partnership with the whole county, you know, kind of paying their fair share for our services and Penora's already, you know? We go outside of Stewart. So, once you set some foot outside of city limits, you're a countywide service in my, in my view. Doesn't matter if you get one call, two calls, three calls or whatever, you're a now countywide. Those people outside of city limits, I'm not paying the taxes to pay for them at this time. But if they do, then that's gonna help out. So, I appreciate your vision. I just, is this the right time? I'd like to see this. Is there some other thing we can do? Because lives, but we need to focus on this and, um, you know, do, is it imperative that we help Audubon out?
Mike, relevant mentioned about other revenue. We've got a minimum assessment called Morgen. They got a new oxygen facility out there. Quick start, when Kristen Renslow was here, she had the tax evaluation. So, we were, now we got a hundred and eighty-seven hours out there. We've got a lot of more income coming in now. And I think between Ash and Chip, we could possibly take some of this money and spread it around.
That's, that's what I'm getting at is, is there something we could do internally that we don't know? That you haven't brought to us specifically and, and maybe did, cause I'm an older person, I forget quite easily, that we can revisit to be that, hey, we have the resources here. We are growing, as you said. And, and help you out where you need it instead of going again and committing to this. I know it, until we get this figured out. If, if this was done DM and, and we knew where we were, uh, it could probably be different, but I just, it just seems a little much, you know? We've been working on this for two years and we kind of want to transition in to base on this, you know?
Question. Instead of running two medics and two drivers in Stewart, why can't we run a medic, an EMT, and a driver? Like we, I mean, we had talked about it a couple of years ago with Ash and running those three. So, that way if you have a, a critical call and an EMT can handle it, the driver and the EMT, or the driver and the EMT can go, the medic stays back. And then if you have a second out call, then you can call fire whoever.
Can we answer one question at a time here? Mike just asked the question and Tron has not answered.
Um, I don't know what the question was. Well, the question was, what can we do, what can we do now in-house to do that? And the answer, I mean, is, you know, yes, one of the big things, having people that are full-time with benefits, right? That's important. Again, you know, we get pushed back about that all the time. There's just, there's no headway that can be made there. I asked about that stuff, have been for five years. Um, you know, so, but that's a good start.
Can I interrupt you on that point? Because that's a good point, and I hope I don't mess you up on the other ones. When you, so we have some people that kind of work full-time hours, right? But they don't get benefits. If you gave them benefits, how would that improve the service?
That would entice people to come work. So, um, then we, you know, when you sign a full-time contract and you get benefits and that kind of thing, then this becomes your priority, right? And, and we can say that it is. And, but now, because everybody is part-time, then they go everywhere else. They work multiple different jobs and they can work here, and they can work here, um, you know? So, luckily, we do have some people that, that provide us with full-time hours. They're in here quite a bit and really stabilize that. Um, but that's really, with the full-time with benefits, that is what that adds is you have people that are committed to here because, you know, you're providing them of what they, you know, need to live. They don't have to go work a second job or whatever the case may be. Well, I mean, let's be real, we're all gonna do that. But, um, but that stabilizes that part of it. Okay? And then, um, I forgot when I was...
I'm sorry. I, I didn't want to do that, but I'm, I'm sorry.
Uh, it's, it, things like, uh, the training part, and that's what I was gonna say. Like, right now, we, we invest almost no money into taking people that are drivers or EMTs and making drivers EMTs, EMTs, advanced EMTs or paramedics. There is, we don't spend a dollar on that, right? And, and that's a really good way to make sure your service is, you know, if you, if you have a driver, a lot of them, maybe not a lot, but plenty of them are interested in becoming EMTs, right? They, they drive on the ambulance for a reason. It's because they, they like doing it and they like the work, right? So, so it's not hard to extend them a hand and say, okay, let's, let's pay for your tuition. You know, let's go get you to be an EMT, right? And then, okay, we'll get to that, right? So, then they commit to us. And of course, there's, that's not a sure shot, right? We, everybody's been burned before on people that don't get their EMTs or get it and then leave or whatever. But, um, you know, we don't have anything as far as like paramedic, you know, that, uh, it's twenty, probably plus thousand now to put somebody through paramedic school. And, and if you get an EMT, you say, hey, I wanna put you through paramedic school. That takes a year. You know, you can get that person for five or six years. You commit to them with full-time benefits, um, you know? And then all of a sudden, you've got a stable department that, that you're not worried about. Well, if this person, um, you know, gets one life change, then now we're hurting. Um, and of course, that can happen to anybody, but, you know, those are the kind of things that it takes. Well, implementing just those two things, you know, we're gonna run you a hundred thousand dollars. Uh, maybe not a hundred, but let's say you add, without even adding anything to payroll, we'll say. But just the benefits, you know, you're looking at twenty-five thousand dollars if you wanted to do that for two people. Cause we, um, only really have... If you wanted to do that for two people, because we only really have one, um, then that's fifty thousand dollars. Then you put, say, four or five people through EMT class a year or have a budget for that, you know, that's five thousand dollars. And then twenty thousand dollars to put somebody through, um, paramedic school once a year and you're up to seventy-five thousand dollars in no time at all. That, that comes directly out of, um, losses that we're already taking. So you're going from, say, a hundred and thirty thousand dollar loss to now over two hundred thousand dollar loss. Um, secular revenue, you know, yes, it, it, that is, makes lots of leaps and bounds in stabilizing service. Um, but unfortunately, it doesn't make a whole lot of difference in, in the losses department.
Have you had anybody that's applied to the department that just wants to work here and doesn't want, doesn't need benefits? And, you know, just wants to work here, uh, part-time? I don't know, I don't know how you get part-time, you know? Has there, hasn't been any of that? Have we, have you utilized that, um, as you can?
Yeah, we do, I mean, that, that's essentially everybody that's working here, you know, at the moment. So, uh, aside from myself, so like, that's, that's what we utilize.
Anybody new, like to get you a new, another body? We're not training people to say, hey, I'll come here, you know, and I'll do like what Danny or Luke do. Um, I'll come here and work here. I don't need benefits because maybe I am working on another job that has benefits, you know? Um, have, 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 has there been any recruitment by anybody on the department to, you know, or had people that said, hey, I'd like to work here and we've utilized that? Right?
Uh, not really a whole lot. Unfortunately, the other, the other part of it is, is that because right now we have a stable rotation, right? Danny, Luke and I, we do two days on, four days off and that covers paramedic position, right? So then it's that second slot, whether that be, which has to be, it could be a paramedic, it could be EMT, uh, advanced EMT or just somebody else, right? Um, putting that spot as a paramedic is expensive. So to answer your question, Christina, while we're here, is that like, I have nothing against having multiple paramedics on. You know, I mean, that's all day today, um, Shelley and Luke Ron, you know, that's double paramedics plus, um, you know, potentially something even higher for that. Uh, that's, that's costly. So, you know, do we need that all the time? And then unfortunately, that's not, you know, when you're asking part-time people to come in, um, and work, well, how do we, how do we leverage the amount of money we have in payroll against the additional cost? You know, it's, it's a lot cheaper to pay somebody ten dollars an hour than it is to pay somebody nineteen seventy-six an hour. And so, um, you know, you have to look at that and, and that's why, but I try to utilize dual paramedic crews so that we have this availability to split off and, and potentially handle more calls. Yeah, yeah. Um, you know, it doesn't always work like that, you know, you still need two drivers, you have to have a couple of people to come in and volunteer. But, um, you know, that's, as far as like applicants go, you know, I, I don't, I have not gone out and tried to get anybody because the more I start bringing them in, well, we don't have a lot of hours. It's hard to keep them engaged and then, you know, they work a couple of shifts and they fizzle out because, you know, they're working their other jobs or whatever it is. And so it's just kind of, you know, difficult to pay for somebody to go through all this orientation and, um, you know, a year later be like, well, I'm only working one shift every four months, so, you know, do something else. So, because there's a people, there's departments in a lot greater need than we are. So, you know, if you, if you're already driving out here to work for us, why couldn't you drive somewhere else where, you know, you could get two or three or four days or a week or whatever? So, um, so that's kind of why there really hasn't been. But we've added some drivers in the last year or two months or whatever. And, and so, you know, because that's, a lot of times that's people from this area, which really kind of.
Danny's got a comment, I want to hear it.
So, the recruitment end of it, um, they're acquaintance, and I'm not gonna put their names on the spot, but they inquired about work down here and they were pretty much told what Sean just said, that there's no hours available and we're not hiring. So, one was an advanced EMT and one's a paramedic, brand new paramedic, so.
Isn't part of the Guthrie County, um,
Thank you, Dan.
deal, wasn't some of that going to be allocated to the trainings and doing some of those that you said would, would help us?
I mean, uh, yes, and not specifically is really the answer to that question. Yes, they intend the, the, I don't know, verbal agreement or whatever, there's no line items that would specify X amount of dollars for training. But it is, you know, that would be assumption.
Jeremy was talking about that a lot, about providing trainings and going around the county to go to different services and provide those trainings, which you just said would, would all do that would help us.
Right, because smaller departments, they can't, can't afford to do that kind of stuff, you know? Um, especially when you've only got a couple of EMTs or a couple of drivers, like how to, when your budget's a couple thousand dollars, it's hard, you can't pay somebody for somebody's thousand dollar or eighteen thousand dollars, so.
Josie?
So I, um, was, you know, um, I haven't been there for a while. I work in the ER and I had the driver for the rescue for about a year. I wanted to do my nursing cent. Um, I was told that I needed to get my EMT prior. So I had, um, enrolled in the course and, um, was told I needed to do clinicals. Um, I, all the clinicals and everything was pretty much everything I learned at RN year. Um, I'm a single mom, so it was pretty much, um, kind of like useless for me to go to the hospital and, at the place I work and do skills that I already knew how to do and not get paid for. Um, so I did not finish clinicals and then I kind of just, I wasn't like on the pager system anymore or anything. Um, so I don't know if that's part of the reason why I'm not on the Stewart Rescue anymore or like what the reason was. But, um, I mean, I still wanted to be like on the rescue. Um, I don't know if like that was part of the reason, but, uh, I mean, I'm still interested in it and things like that. But I don't know, I, that's just another example of, you know, like I could use my skills. I do want to advance, but, um, just kind of, just an example of like, I'm someone who would be willing to help out and be another, you know, licensed professional on, right? So.
Thanks, Josie.
Yep.
We may have more questions for Sean.
About the restart, or just about the, uh, just the proposal, right?
Yeah, just about, I was talking about Ottawa. Okay, so.
Pass it.
Yes, go ahead.
It's a little hard to hear, so when you guys mumble, I don't hear too much what you're saying. Um, I wrecked my car on Dead Man's Curve last end of February. And, um, on a nice day, when the temperature was above freezing, there was still an icy patch that I was not contemplating because there was no ice on any other part of the road. But I flipped my car and, uh, was bleeding and here came the ambulance. And I was very thankful. I'm also at a point where I, uh, have very low income. I lost my job because of that accident. I was not able to, to teach a full classroom of special needs kids. So thankful for the ambulance service. Totally believe that it needs to be funded completely. And I think if you look at the big picture, if what you're talking about is a funding package, which it sounds like you are from, you know, what I can make out of what you're saying. Um, the truth of the matter is that our fire department and most fire departments around the country are so technologically advanced now that we have fewer fire calls. I mean, when's the last time you heard the siren go off for a fire call? I haven't heard it in a long, long time. So if the fire department is able to manage their budget, maybe it's because they're getting fewer calls. I think back to the time when we were talking about the police department, when I was on the council. And what we had to decide is, could we trust the judgment of the police chief when he said, we're gonna be a whole lot better off if we have more officers and we really make this a fully functional police department? We went ahead and did that. And now we do have a fully functioning police department. And we can do things that we never would have been able to do if we hadn't done that. I feel we're talking basically in a more generalized way maybe than what you're dealing with in specifics. We need to have a fully functioning EMS system that is there for Stewart, I think primarily. I mean, we are the Stewart City Council after all. But if a well-seasoned, intelligent, responsible leader is saying, this is what I see that we need to make our department the best it can be, then I would tend to say, Sean, you tell me what you need and I will certainly give it a good, serious look and not nitpick it. Why did I hit that slick spot on Dead Man's Curve on a nice day when there was no moisture, no snow? Why was there an ice patch at eight-thirty in the morning on a route that's traveled by school kids? Who's, who's supposed to be taking care of that road? I don't know. But whoever's supposed to be doing it, whoever's responsible for it, obviously did not have a fully functioning department to make sure that there was no ice on Dead Man's Curve at eight-thirty in the morning on a school day. Our elder population in Stewart is growing. I don't doubt that I may need to call them at some point. There are many, many people in Stewart who may need to call them. We need people who can feel comfortable that they have your backing to do what needs to be done. EMS calls are growing. All you have to do is listen to the news, how many accidents are happening on our highways? I mean, it is more and more. So all I'm saying to you is, in a big picture sort of way, trust your leaders, trust the people who, who have, are doing the job. They've been doing the job for quite a few years. They know what they need. And if we have the money, then fund them. If it's not working out down the road, look at it with them again and work out the kinks. Okay? That's all.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chris.
So, I just, what? Well, I was just gonna say something, you know, I mean, I think Brian and myself were on the council when we did the cops thing. And, uh, we didn't do what we're trying to do here, is trying to find you some funds and not have to commit to, uh, to Ottawa County. We actually bonded for four hundred thousand dollars, I believe, is that right?
Yes.
For how many years?
Four to five years.
Four to five? And how much interest are we paying on that? Okay, so we're paying interest on that to pay for equipment and salaries. I believe that's what we did. We don't want to do that here, you know, we don't want to have to bond. Um, Sean has made it clear that it's stable, trying to make it better. So I don't think we're in trouble in fear of losing our EMS. Uh, we have a proposal that could change the face of EMS in Guthrie County forever. The thing is, is how do we, how should we get that to this point and, and, and help out, you know? Uh, I would love to do something this big. Is it the right time? I'm just, I'm just so concerned about this, you know? Do I, do I need to be? I don't know. And we don't know what's gonna pan out. We, it's all good. Uh, everybody gets the money and does the service, we get the training, we get more people, we, uh, and, and we function that way. But, yeah.
I think there's a lot of things up in the air. Paul Williams won for money, Ottawa County. You could be doing two hundred transfers, you can, in a year's time. And you, I'm just throwing stuff out, I'm just being silly right at the moment, but you could do two hundred. There's too many variables. We don't know about the Guthrie Town, we don't know when we're gonna get out of that, that's up in the air too. Because we haven't made it to that point yet, so. You know, we're trying to look at it as a, um, you know, financial part of it, but there's too many variables to, this is very hard to set up here, um, to go one way or another. Um, but I, I don't know. I don't know, I wish we had a crystal ball up here to tell us.
Absolutely.
Um, what's a, where to go or how to make our decisions, but we don't. One good thing is, I mean, it, and, and as a proposal, I mean, I don't like, for myself, I don't like the, um, ninety-day termination. I would like to see that smaller. So if something, if you're thirty days into it and this is like, whoa, this isn't working, you're still another ninety days out before we can terminate.
Ash had brought that up and I, you know, unfortunately, I think ninety days because then they need something, not better, I'm sorry.
No, you're fine.
Um, you know, they, as this process has kind of shown some light on it, it's difficult for them to, you know, cover themselves. And so that's why ninety days is because they need something, yeah, that, that could put us in a bind is, you know?
I, I do, I, I do see, I do get your point where you're saying, you know, with this proposal, it will grow the ambulance, uh, put more staff on, give it a second shift, kind of prepare that team a little bit for if whatever happens with Guthrie County. Now, now you're coming to the, to the plate with a full team with a, you know, and, and you're ready to go. I get that. But there's, I don't, I don't know. It's just.
Yeah, this was a year from now and we knew how the county was, it'd be different.
Right, right.
I, yeah, I, I'm, I'm really, my biggest, I, it's personnel, but I just, I just don't know how that, again, would weigh us all. It'd be great, yeah.
Luke, I want to hear it from you again, please.
All right. So basically, you come up here on our chairman. So with the Ottawa, in regards to the Ottawa contract, um, I believe it's, it's a sound idea. Um, the issue I foresee though is that I don't believe it's enough money as of yet. Um, personnel, hiring additional personnel, attracting them here is going to be very, uh, difficult. Uh, like we've mentioned in the past, it's very difficult to get, to attract people to Stewart. We're kind of in, um, quite a ways from everywhere. Also, we're within proximity of Des Moines, which pay a lot for their services. So, um, you're looking at eighty thousand a year plus, um, for any of the Des Moines Fire Department to get us services. Uh, so it's gonna be difficult to attract them here for the, for the amount that we're gonna give them. In order for staff to have as much money as we can so that we can hire not just one person, but at least three, um, uh, paramedics so that we can cover down on that transport truck. Um, I just don't know if the amount that we're asking, what's the amount that we're asking for? Uh, look at the number.
One thirty.
One thirty, okay. So if you think of one thirty as the amount, you're looking for sixty, seventy thousand dollars for annual salary for that, for one person. Um, you're almost eating up your entire amount just for that and that's not even including benefits or returns.
Yeah, benefits, you're almost a hundred thousand dollars.
Right, exactly. And like I said, to attract people here, we do need that benefit package or something, you know, in order to entice people here. Because we can't pay the eighty thousand per, per paramedic that, that Des Moines does. So we do need something to incentivize even more. Um, so, so the amount, I think, is probably the biggest hurdle. The wear and tear on the trucks, um, hopefully the amount that we make from the transports is gonna go into the wear and tear on the trucks. We are gonna need new trucks very soon in order to, like, we need an additional one, of course, um, with lower mileage because we've got. um, with lower mileage because we've got trucks that are, all, both our other trucks are over twelve hundred, uh, and over a hundred thousand miles on, on mileage. So, the wear and tear is going to be difficult on them, especially when you're driving. So we'll need additional money for that. Uh, so, so this plan is good. I just believe we need quite a bit more from, from the hospital. Is there a chance of you turn around and be like, hey, we need two hundred thousand in order? Well, I mean, but honestly.
I'll let you in on something. I kind of thought about that.
Okay.
And, uh, the answer was a pretty good no.
Okay.
You know?
Well, because I've actually been approached by Dallas County Hospital because, uh, I'm, I'm a Dallas County employee as well. And we do quite a few transports out of there. We just did two to Iowoc City in one day. Yeah, that's, that's exhausting. But, um, but the thing is, is that when we, when we, Dallas County has three trucks on every day. Full staff of paramedics. So the issue is, is that we actually run out of, we run out of trucks in the county and we can't provide transport for the hospital. So I was actually approached by the, uh, uh, medical director of the hospital and asked, hey, you know, you're from Stewart. Can you guys, um, they heard about the Autobin contract and they're like, can you guys come contract with us? So the, the demand is out there for contract companies. Um, the issue is, the cost has to, the, or the, the contract price needs to match what our, what we, we can give. And right now with our staffing, we cannot guarantee, uh, currently, um, a second ambulance truck all the time. We need, we need several more medics on shift. And so that, you know, that we would need way more than a hundred, in my opinion. Any, any other questions?
No, I appreciate that. Thanks, man.
Thank you, Luke.
Oh, Brian, just, I may be oversimplifying this, but with what Luke just said and Autobin was asking for, is that a private sector issue that is trying to force upon small-town Stewart, Iowa to try to remedy when Penora doesn't want it? Is that something that, you see these private, uh, paramedics or private air rescuers running around in Des Moines, right? Is that a market that should be looked at from them and we should, I don't know. I think there are tax dollars going near that stuff, but I don't know. It's like a private dealer.
Like mid, what was it? I don't even know what mid was.
I mean, let me answer that.
The, the private ambulance service prior to Penora had Midwest Medical. And Midwest Medical pulled their ambulance because Cass County has a deal where the hospital, Atlantic, and the county all chipped in together to pay them hundreds of thousands of dollars to cover the entire county. So they told Autobin, well, we don't want any transports for you anymore because we need these people here, so good luck. Um, so then that's, Autobin approached Levi Johnson at the time and said, hey, you guys want to do this, you know, what, what would it cost us to do this? So then they went to, um, the county, the hospital went to the county and said, well, we need to pay somebody to do this. We don't have the money right now. Um, and then the county chipped in some and then the hospital chipped in some for that first year. Well, it's only been one year. Uh, and now then we got on after them and we approached them about it. So, but as far as like the private entity side of it, in Des Moines, for example, the metro, uh, like they're dying because they, without tax dollars to back up losses, um.